You are watching Access to the Port County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the June 18th meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accessing the port county.org.
Hey everyone, I can have everyone stand to join us for saying the pledge of opening the meeting tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all its greatness and power.
Thank you everybody. Good evening, council, have you had a moment to review the minutes prior to meeting tonight?
Yes.
Does anyone have any changes or additions that I noted?
Well, I'm good, blanked out.
I did see a few, one thing that I did need to have noted was that I had to accuse myself from voting on the Swanson Center run for approval because I'm employed by Swanson Center, so we'll have that as an addition. Other than a few typos that I have noted, I have no corrections if no one else says. No ask for a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. One.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the fund report. Any questions or comments on the fund report? I'm watching American Rescue Plan Fund, mostly because of our remodel project. Laura, I know you'll have an update on that so we can kind of keep an eye on that number as we walk through just to make sure that we have everything paid for and taken care of. There any questions, comments? Question. Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the fund report.
I move to approve the May fund report. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to payment of the bills. Do you have any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none from the council, can we have a motion to approve the bills for May?
I move to approve the payment of bills for May 2024.
Thank you. And the second?
The second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any first audits from the post office? Any first audits? No? No? Thank you. Then we'll move on. I don't believe we have a report from Amos 4 this month. Do we have anything from our attorney's office?
No updates.
Okay. Thank you. And from our engineer's office, hello Sam?
No updates.
Okay. Thank you. Sam, I know you and I briefly spoke at one point. We are going to start looking at the CCMG project later this summer, so looking forward to that project coming forward. Anything from our court department tonight?
Amanda's not going to be here.
Yeah.
Amanda's not here. I have the minutes from the May meeting. Freena's backed out of sponsoring the centennial due to the kitchen fire. They're closed. They decided to wait the winter feast. They're going to have a photo booth, bounce house, games for kids, adult games, cornhole. Did Amanda, Julie, did Amanda get ahold of you today for the order party payment?
I'm sorry?
Did Amanda get ahold of you for a order party payment today?
Yes.
It's all taken care of. Okay. And then the after-party's going to be at Moose Lodge and Mulch was brought up, I don't know details, that's all I have on this board. And the next meeting will be, was yesterday, so this Saturday is the 100 year centennial. And they've got signs made up for overflow parking, they've got permission from St Luke's Church to park there, and then people can walk the back three, and that's about it.
Okay, any questions or comments for, okay, nothing for the court department. Thank you. I don't see our building inspector here, so I'll assume there's no report from him. Anything for planning and zoning? Nope. This is moving very quickly. And that brings forth our marshal, so.
Good evening.
Good evening. So we're going to the centennial festivals this weekend, and the police department will have our tent out there, and I gave each of you an offer. If you don't want to child and have a patient kid, it's very simple, but it's very important to be giving these out to the parents for their children. Fill it out with some basic information, use an inkless fingerprint kit that comes with it, and also a child, like, to give a DNA sample. If the neighbor recovers, it's, keep these very safe, but not in a safe deposit box because you may need to access them. Recommendations to keep them in a safe at home, even in a kitchen drawer or file cabinet, somewhere where they're readily accessible in case they need them, that are unlikely to be needed. Very important to have, so. We will also have Deputy Erin Galardi from the Kingsford Heights Police Department. She's certified in child safety restraint installation inspection. She's going to come up and do the installation inspections and answer any questions about child seat installation that anybody may have. So they'll be out there from noon to five. That's all I got.
I agree.
Does anyone have anything for me?
Question. Son of a word, just curiosity on the front door violations, you have just some examples of what some of those are?
Yeah, we have a whole book full. There's usually it's, could be grass, could be vehicles, could be, anything, anything that's a violation that we address. Could be a dog or barge.
Okay.
Could be a noise.
Okay.
Could be anything.
Like those. Okay. All right. Motion. Thank you.
Right, that's all. Nothing else. Thank you very much. We always appreciate your support.
Thank you, Marshal. And our street department commissioner is out of town this evening, however, he did provide an update for us. There are no issues currently with the plow and dump trucks, no issues with the pickup trucks, however, with the motor and the bobcat, there are some issues that they're in the process of repairing. They've both been used as needed, but they are back and forth for repairs right now. The leaf machine is currently being diagnosed for issues that it has at Brown Equipment Company in Fort Wayne, and there is an estimate that I have copies of for everybody to review this evening. Lawn machines are all in service, chippers in service, and they have taken a few loads already out to the county for chipping and removing other yard waste that wasn't able to be picked up in towers. For those of you again who need yard waste towers or have special pickups, you're encouraged to call Borden directly, who's our refuse provider. If you need that phone number, you can call the town hall or go to their website for Borden Waste. We are looking to put out informational flyers for this fall and spring for leaf removal and cleanups. They've used four tons of asphalt road to patch already this year in preparing pot holes. And so, you know, if you've seen pot holes around the area, hopefully they've been repaired. If not, feel free to call the town hall, and we'll keep a list there. As far as the parks go, I know you mentioned mulch, Laura. Part of that has to do with mulch that they're, they'll be getting through the street department and installing if they haven't already. They have installed, however, the ADA ramp in the new swing set area at Nelson Park. As of right now, the tennis courts are not available for use due to some cracks and some other surface conditions that we've noticed. We're not putting up the nets at this year, at this time. Other than that, the welcome signs, six of the seven have now been installed, and I think that's all that we have for this report. Any questions? No?
Just one, I would like to make a point, say thank you for making the updated welcome signs at Trail Creek, it's a combination of my daughter and her husband that put that together for us.
Yes. And they did a fantastic job, and then once we had them all printed and put together, the issue was the street department had them properly installed. It's nice to have a combination of people from the town, working with the town to make those projects come to fruition. Here are these copies for you, if you'll hand this one down to Julie for the post office. This quote is from Brown Equipment Company, who's the company where we bought the leaf truck from, the leaf machine. The total that they're estimating right now of repairs is $4,420.88. That's a different repair than we had done for that 47.07. So this one has to do with the housing and the squash, and some other things that were found. I'm not sure what the difference is there than what we paid, but we'll have to find that out.
Yeah, because that's essentially the same thing, so I'm curious.
That's, as I feel the same. So we'll ask state that question when it returns next week. Other than that, we have all the updates from the street department. Was there anything for our state this month?
Nothing. They have, they have an executive board meeting, but not a commissioner's meeting. We'd like to study through the one thing, take the one next one.
Great. Okay, moving on to old business. Do we have an update on the town hall remodel?
We, uh, town hall is moving quite well. We're scheduled to be done by the end of the month, and it looks like it's going to be first or second week, probably the second week of July, the target to be done. But they, real quick, they've got the, everything is pretty much in, floor's in, they're waiting for the cabinets, they're working on the air conditioning. They did provide us a water tank, or a water tank that was there, but it's, they said about 24 years old, so they provided us one, okay. So yeah, everything is looking quite well. We won't be able to officially move in until that final inspection, so we probably will , can move some furniture, things in later on, the first part of the month, but, and my goal is to have our next meeting there if we could.
That would be fantastic.
That's the goal. But we have some tiddly to do in final inspections and walkthroughs and stuff like that, so. We did get a credit for the front door, third, I'm going to say 3,400, I'll make it up, but I think I'll say 3,400 for the front door.
Okay.
But as far as numbers and adjustments, we'll get all those at the next meeting.
Have we had any other change orders come through?
Not this time.
Okay, good.
Not this time. We do have, we do have, I mentioned last month, an issue back in the drainage that was caught, I guess you'd want to say, at the design stages project, but we had that hopefully resolved. We had to handle landscaping, meet with Steve Thomas last week, trying to come up with an idea. We'll need some correction because of the cost, potential cost. Not doing anything, just working up some numbers for us to look at. But when it gets to certain dollar figures, presume we need to put that out for a quote.
We would need to put that out for a quote, yes.
So I will give you where.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Can I add one word to old business?
You may.
Since I didn't, I don't want to do it, might have been last month.
You may.
Regarding the house on Mullins and Yankee and the boulder project.
Okay.
Mrs. Curry will leave. She texted me actually this morning, at 6:00 this morning, and her plan is, they're still in construction, still repairing. They, I've already explained to them about, you know, our project, our commitment from last one. They would like to go out to this quarry and look for more boulders at their own cost. So I gave her all the information for her to go out and start looking, but it's probably going to be another couple of weeks before we ourselves do any work out there. So that's the, she'd like to have boulders across the whole front, so that's what they're going to look at.
I certainly understand that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Laura. Looking at new business, we were supposed to have the second reading for the ordinance authorizing additional appropriations and safety fund for the 2024 budget, however, I would really like for all five council members to be present when we do that reading, so we're going to hold off on that for tonight, just so that everyone is aware that that's going to be put off till next month. That said, do we have any public comment this evening? If you'll, make sure your mic is on, so that that light comes on at the front. Introduce yourself, state your name and your address for us.
Hi, my name is Kim Sliva, and with the 324 Trail Street. I just wanted to see if the board had an ordinance for the town regarding abandoned and empty properties, specifically the property at the corner of Leo and Trail. That's run into a reverse mortgage foreclosure and a large tree fell in the backyard, and no one is doing much of it, cutting the grass. I mailed out information along with pictures of the property to the company that was supposedly maintaining it. It came back to me as addressed unknown, so that's why I'm kind of wondering if the town was able to possibly put something together so that you all, including the law enforcement agents, know what properties are empty, and then maybe the city can work out something where these people have to pay a fee for having the extra security to look at these houses.
So I know that there is something for, I don't want to say abandoned houses, but empty homes. And Marshal, you can correct me, do you have a list of those homes right now?
Uh, if the town hall maintains the list.
Okay. And we only, I hate to say we only know if people report them, but we don't always, we're not always told, like we should be. We don't always get notifications from the county if there's a foreclosure or from the bank necessarily, so if we are aware of that, then we can add that to the list. And you said you've sent pictures already. Would you mind providing those to the town as well?
Absolutely.
Great. I know that's our topic, you know, that I want to make your comment.
Absolutely. That was the company of the, inside the window as well. And it came back like weeks later.
Okay.
No, I haven't, must have.
You can, you'll be on.
Oh, it is. Yep, I just wanted you guys to see what I did.
Got it.
But I actually tried to reach out to this piece of the town.
And the reason that I'm so concerned about this particular property is because I already had a tree from that particular property fall through my house. So there's one tree of the triplets left, and it's not carrying so well.
You said this is at Leo and Trail?
Correct.
The address is 328 Trail Street. I think that's where I saw on one of the.
324, so.
You're 324, so this is 328?
Yes. I'll have you look there.
Depending on the size of the tree, we can have the street department go out and take parts of it. I don't know if they can handle a whole tree being removed.
It's in the backyard.
And it's in the backyard?
Yeah.
So there was also a fire there, someone with the fence on fired, and the company obviously isn't doing anything about that either. So obviously there's maybe some juvenile or something going on.
Steve, are you joining here? Steve, are you aware that there's a lesson nearby that's turned on that property, just talking to that person, you see?
I've been also working on a twice-lit property for the last three years, the ones that are empty, from what I understand, it's still on.
I think that we may have to do a little further investigation, I might have to get an answer for at this meeting.
That's okay. We'll just get it to break up, so maybe the town could take a look, and like I said, if the town is able to make some, be combined with all of these people that are being kind of negligent, that'd be great, as well as getting the property done.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for being very attentive.
Yes, thank you.
Any other public comment this evening?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, I'm Bill Newton from 604 Black Oak. Can you hear the mic?
If you, yeah, please, please press that button there.
Is it on now?
No, hold on to it, a second.
Now.
Yep, there we go.
Thank you, there you go.
Thank you, Bill.
We're connected. All right, Bill Newton, 604 Black Oak, and we're still dealing with this golf cart issue hanging on. So I heard last meeting after that, that if it was this golf cart was street legal, that it would, then it would okay. All right. So now the burden is, okay, let's make this thing street legal. So we went to the Bureau of Motor Vehicles and asked them, what does it take to get this thing street legal? And they said, well, it's got to be titled, it's got to have a VIN number. Okay, no problem. So they made it sound like, you just get the police, the police will come out and take a look at it, and fill out a report, and then we'll go from there. I figure, okay, it's going to be simple. So I called the Port County Sheriff, told them that we had a golf cart, and told them the whole story. So they sent out, I think his name is Nick Corpenau?
Nick is one of our, right.
Very good, very good. He, he had the documents there that in his vehicle, I guess he's got, you know, the word of to produce a document like that. He verified the steering number, he looked at the bill of sale, and everything was cool as far as he was concerned. So we thought, hey, we're going to, right? So we took the report that he gave, just went back to Bureau of Motor Vehicles, and they said, no, you need more than this. It's okay. No, okay. They said, well, it has to be, has to have a VIN number, and it has to have a, you know, it's got to be street legal. Okay. So they said, really, the person you need to talk to is either the dealer or the manufacturer. Okay, so. So we went to the dealer, which is in Chesterton. Golf carts are legal, they have a ordinance in Chesterton.
In Chesterton.
So they are legal there, okay? And he made a big mistake as far as I'm concerned, because when my neighbor went to buy this golf cart, the first question he should have asked was, where are you going to use this? And that would have been the right question to ask, okay? But he didn't. So anyway, so my neighbor spent a bunch of money on this, and so he got this thing that he can't even use. He just wanted to use it between his house and the dog park, it was all about five blocks away. Okay, so you know the rest of the story. Okay, so, so we went to the dealer, and the dealer says, okay, no problem. He says, we can put lights on it, we can put seat belts on it, we could turn signals, and I said, yeah, but we need more than that. We need a VIN number, okay, and a title. He says, well, I can't do that. And I says, okay, well then who can? He says, you're going to have to go to the manufacturer. Okay, so, so I looked up the manufacturer, and the manufacturer was a club car, LST, they're located in Georgia, okay, the best in Georgia. I talked to them about this, and they said, well, you have to go to a federally licensed golf cart manufacturer to have this done. Okay, I'm sure there's, everybody's got one, right? So I said, well, help me out, I was worried about. He said, well, there's one located in Columbia City called American Land Master, and there's one called Sunlight Carts in Delphi, Indiana. And Delphi, Indiana is right near Lafayette. Columbia City's right near Fort Wayne, so they're not real companion here. So I called both of those locations, and they said, wow, how much did you spend for the vehicle? I told them, and, well, it wasn't me and my neighbor, and they said, it's, it's not going to be worth it, we can tell you right now, because by the time you do all the upgrades necessary, it's going to weigh, cost more than that's worth. Here we go. Okay, so, then we got the idea that they also sell these type of vehicles at Lowe's, okay, they call them side-by-side, okay? I call them four-wheelers, but they call them side-by-side. And I went to Lowe's and I said, okay, do you have a copy of a title for these? And they said, yes, we do. I said, can I get a copy? And they said, well, they're really, you know, they didn't want to give me a copy of the title. I said, just mark Floyd on it and give me a, so they did it, they gave me this, okay? I said, all right, so, that sounds pretty simple. So, okay. So they said, well, you have to have a vehicle that has a VIN number and a title, it's titled or entitled, if that's working. Okay. All right, so, I didn't have the right, I didn't come here, right, Long Beach, because Long Beach, it's okay, they have more, this right effect is posted right out inside here. And so I came here, they were very helpful. They gave me a copy of all their ordinances, and they told me everything I needed to know. And they said, okay, we, we have a permit type of operation here, we charge $65 a year per, per golf cart.
Right.
Okay. And I said, well, how many have you put out? And they said, about 300. Okay. And they said that in the way, actually, we need more, more certificates, because they run out. Okay, so, I talked to Diane from Delver, right, and I also talked to Renee, one of the works at the, she's like a dispatcher, okay. I talked to her, and she said, well, you may want to talk to, there's a golf cart dealer on 12th, right near the state line. She didn't know whether it was Indiana or Michigan.
Okay.
So, okay, so we drove out there, and we thought, you know, this is really not going anywhere. So we did talk to this dealer, it's, it's called Carts on 12th, okay? And we did talk to the guy there, and he says, well, what do you need? We told him. He says, well, you come to the right place. He says, I have a federally licensed golf cart manufacturer. Really? Yeah. And he says, I can tell you right now, you're wasting your time trying to upgrade the golf cart that you currently have, if you're going to spend a lot of money on that. So he said, you're better off buying one from me, and I'll make sure it is street legal, that it has a VIN number, that it has a title, okay, so it's involved. And so, the owner's name is Ed Arnold, I don't know if you know him or not, but he has a licensed, they call him an LSV, low speed vehicle, that's what it's called, and he said, it will be street legal. He said, in order to make it street legal, it has to have DOT, Department of Transportation tires on it, it has to have a windshield that's rated for the DOT, not just a Plexiglas, it's got to be rated, okay? It's got to have these supports for the ceiling, the roof.
So I can see how all of the things to, the other, that car, what are the smaller?
Well, it's called crush, a crush-proof roof.
Okay.
He said, that, he said, that's not an normal golf cart. So he said, and it'll have turn signals, it'll have brake lights, it'll have the headlights, everything will, he said. So, he said, but with this, once you have this, you can drive that, that, once you get with the BMV and registered, do all that stuff, get the title, you can then drive this vehicle in any street in the area. this vehicle in any street in Indiana that's a speed limit of 35 or less. There you go. So now is that going to be a problem? Because he's going to spend a lot of money on this.
And he'll have it insured, then he'll have a license and have a plate on it.
All the above. President, may I?
Please. If I may defer.
I just advise, as I normally do, that this is public comment section, when you guys have to try to accommodate.
Right.
I also advise that he's asking you for legal opinion, which you're not qualified.
Thank you.
And you should seek counsel. The Indiana regulations, the regulations, the various low speed vehicles are clear, and that is something that you or your friend, or a member wants to have, those should do their diligence.
Thank you. And he, he spoke for us, so I can't really say anything more than, than that.
Okay, so should he contact you then?
Because Mr. Willery works for the town, he can't really give legal opinion to that resident, but if that resident has an attorney that he works for, he can, he can contact his attorney.
Oh, okay.
Or he can follow what the state statute is, that's posted online.
That's what I'm doing, right, that's what I'm doing. Okay. So it looks to me like there's going to be other opportunities, because just like this guy here, he doesn't want to load up this truck, you know, and start up this gasoline engine, and drive it for five blocks, and then have to, I don't know, it's $2 plus himself.
Again, if that's, if that's the case, and people are willing to, to take the proper avenue, or to go through the proper motions to get something that, that is street legal, even if it is a low speed vehicle, that would be up to themselves, I can't provide an opinion on that.
But isn't there?
As far as golf carts go, we can't, we, I don't think that our opinion will change on golf carts. I can tell you, I live on a one block street, one block long, and on a daily basis, down my street, I see people attempting to go 30 miles an hour plus, oftentimes running with stop signs going on to Greenwood Avenue, or the other direction coming off of Greenwood, down Rainbow, up Melody, and back to Ruski, on a daily basis.
Right.
I have invited the marshal and his, his staff to sit in my driveway, as have all my neighbors. Once they're there, they stop. But they can't be everywhere, all over the town. So even on the smallest streets, on the smallest sized streets, and I mentioned, I guess even on a street like Trail, which dead ends at one end of it, that people aren't exactly careful with the way that they drive. And so our, our opinion as a council was to err on the side of safety with not approving golf carts. At this time, I don't see any of us changing that opinion.
Okay, well, these are supposedly also on the board.
That would be the board, I can't, I can't speak for any other towns or cities.
Right. Okay. All right, well, I just wanted to bring it up, because I had a panelists here that need to hit with this.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Good to see you as always. Any other public comment this evening? And again, if you would state your name and address.
Danny Bev, 2015 Osmond Road.
Thank you.
Okay, about application for permits. I know, I didn't know it went up 25 more dollars. It was 25, now it's 50. Then, I'm trying to clear, clarifying for, building commissioner come out to look at a door, like an outside door, you go ahead, you know, that we want to change it to a different colored door, but it's still cost me 55 dollars for him to look at that door and say, why? I'm not doing, I'm not doing monitoring or anything like that. I just want to change a couple of doors. Same place, same area, open, same way. That's what I'm trying to figure out, structure change. I'm not doing the structure change, except the color of the door.
I thought that was what the ordinance states, as long as they're not making any major structural changes.
And there's, you're not widening the door, you're not changing the size?
Same size and everything else.
Did you apply for a permit already?
Yes, we did apply for our permits.
Okay.
But I said, I'm not going to pay the building commissioner come out there and tell me. Yeah, that works.
That fee?
Because I had to pay a fee for.
It was a loss. I don't think that the, that should already be included in your permit fee, if that's a, and really, if it's over a certain dollar threshold, that's when you have to apply for the permit.
Right.
Have you talked to the building commissioner to ask him these questions?
No, I, this is first time, today we went.
Might I recommend that you do that, and I can provide you with this phone number at the end of the meeting?
Is it on application?
I believe so, I don't, really don't, because I'm not looking at it right in front of me, but if I can look at that, I can tell you. That is the number for our town hall.
Oh, okay.
This one right here should be for our building commissioner, if you want to give him a call.
Okay.
And ask him those questions directly, he can, he can guide you.
I thought he may be here tonight, but he's not.
We had hoped, we had hoped, but.
Could, I could understand a structural change, I like the most structural change.
I would recommend that you call Steve, ask him those questions directly.
I'm fairly certain that's what the ordinance states, but yeah.
It does, but also if it's over the certain dollar threshold, there does have to be the permit process. But again, Steve can better advise you on those things than we can as a council.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other public comments this evening?
Good evening. That is on. Yeah, Pearl Tashima, I live at 1927 New School Spring, I was here in April at the meeting, and I was not able to come to the neighborhood, like I hit the poison, but I'm a background fee. And I was trying to, I watched the meeting, thinking maybe something would be mentioned about the issue on 1929 with my quarter neighbor, because I was, you guys said you were going to do some follow-up, but I haven't heard anything, and I was wondering if there's any news on that.
There, there was some discussion on it, and I will tell you that I spoke with the marshal about it, and I've spoken with the court's office, because right now our records are a bit in disarray, being in storage, it's hard for us to get back to where that specific folder is and file where all those records are for that, that address. So we have records of prior communications with, with the, it's not really guardian for the address, but, but the folks who helped to run, to run that property. And so we can't access that file to know what's been done and what hasn't already, and then where to, how to proceed right at this moment. So if you can just bear with us for a little bit longer.
I just, I didn't think anything was going on.
I know, we did try to look for those records, and we weren't able to access them yet, so that it has not fallen off our radar.
Okay, so we don't have any idea what could happen.
Steve.
No, I understand. I waited here since then.
Please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say to my office, the chief contacted me, he was having some difficulties tracking down the communication, and I'm trying to put a new model, so the citation process has a problem happening, but enforcing the bill is a process, and sorry about the timing of this from your perspective, but we have to follow what code say, and chief was diligent in tracking all those little communications, so that's why I contacted you.
Okay. So what should I do with that? So if, if you would hold tight for us, if you have questions, you can feel free to call Marshall. Do you have their own emergency number?
Yeah.
Okay. I would say that would be the best way to contact him.
Email.
Or email, okay, we can.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other, other public comments this evening? Okay. Hearing no further public comments, we will abandon anything from the court's office for comments.
That's fair.
Thank you. Any council comments this evening? A quiet bunch. Hearing no further comments, do we have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn? So you're.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for watching, everybody, have a nice evening.